Madam President, no fancy historical background today?
I usually try to keep it simple for our work sessions. I don't like to distract from the very important messages that you have, Mayor.
Oh, okay, alright. Alright, very good. Looks like we have everyone here. Channel eighteen. I don't know if we're on yet, because Mr. Moderator. Channel eighteen has us.
Yep, they should be online now, Mayor.
Alright, so everyone, we're online. Okay, very good. Welcome, everyone, to the Mayor Commission Workshop Session of April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty. The time is now ten oh one A.M. And we do have one item, One West Palm Beach, One West Palm Development. Mr. Green, do you want to walk us through this? You have to unmute yourself, I think.
I've got somebody heading down to him now if he's got a problem again. Rick, if you can call back into that number. Apologize, Mayor. He had an issue this morning. We had resolved.
Okay, I mean, listen, we're all trying to work through these new times, so it's okay.
Hey, Mary. For some reason, they're not hearing my audio.
I can hear you now, Rick. I don't know what you just did.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Alright. Let me keep that. Okay. Alright, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna go right to the Okay, so this is a request by Jeff Green, the developer of One Palm Beach, who contacted the planning staff last week, who, as you know, is developing the mixed-use project at five fifty quadrille, consisting of Class A office, a hotel, and residential. And he would like to convert the entire project into a residential development. The original zoning for this property was limited to ten stories in height. He was permitted to go to thirty stories only with the inclusion of either a two hundred-room hotel and a two hundred thousand square-foot Class A office building. If you did one or the other, you were allowed to go to twenty-five stories. If you did both, with the code change that we did, you were allowed to go to thirty stories. Just to provide a little background, over the last twenty years, we have been providing Palm Beach County a letter in March of every year with regard to our transportation concurrency exception area. What that TCEA does, it allows and recognizes that a downtown is going to have more traffic than, let's say, a suburban location. So we can have levels of service on our roadways that fail, provided that we keep a certain balance of residential to non-residential. We're fortunate in that we don't have roadways that are failing, but nonetheless, we have to maintain this ratio, which started at zero point three three, and that's a residential total number of units divided by your total square footage of non-residential per thousand square foot. That started at a ratio of zero point three three, maybe a decade ago. Every year it creeped up until it leveled out at a required ratio of zero point four six that we had to maintain from two thousand and eleven onward. So as part of the report we send every March, you see this summary on the right. It's roughly a thirty-five-page report. But we identify all the residential units that have been built over the past year, how much non-residential square footage, and how many hotel rooms were built. And it's a running track that we've been keeping track of for the last twenty years. So you see the red line in the middle of this slide. This is what we can build per our TCEA. So we can build just under fifteen point one million square feet of non-residential, provided that we build sixty-nine hundred thirty-four residential units. So in number one, you can see, this is the total that is permitted. Again, without having to do a single traffic improvement, having said that, certainly, we are making traffic improvements throughout our downtown. And again, this is the ratio that I referenced under number two. Sixty-nine hundred residential units divided by fifteen million equals that ratio of zero point four six. And then, as you see, as of February twenty-ninth, our last report, we have built seventy-four hundred seventy-three residential units, and we've only built ten million square feet of non-residential. So our ratio right now is zero point seven four. So there's a high disparity between the amount of residential and the amount of non-residential. We're not penalized if we don't have enough residential. We are penalized if we have too much non-residential without the accompanying residential. So right now, we can build an additional five million square feet of non-residential without having to build another residential unit downtown. Again, not to say that's what we're going to do, but you see the discrepancy in the two types of uses. So just to provide a very quick history on Class A office developments, as the commission is aware, we've had three projects, a total of four towers encompassing over a million square feet. We haven't had any Class A office built since two thousand and eight, when the City Place Office Tower was built. So since that time, we have been trying to encourage Class A office construction through the formation of the city's Flagler Financial District, the adoption of the Okeechobee Business District, and then, more recently, our Economic Development Plan. All strive to try to encourage Class A office and moving corporations into West Palm Beach. Going back to two thousand and fifteen, at the request of Jeff Green, he had purchased the property at five fifty quadrille. At that time, and even today, the quadrille garden district has a maximum height of ten stories. Working with Mr. Green, we adopted an ordinance on April thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, which created a special incentive for Class A office uses and hotels. And what that did is said you could increase your height from ten stories to twenty-five stories if you build either two hundred thousand square feet of Class A office or you do a full-service hotel consisting of a minimum of two hundred rooms. If you do both, then you're allowed to go from ten stories to thirty stories. Your floor area ratio is increased from two point seven five to five point five. So that's where we are today. So the following year, Mr. Green submitted an application to the city's Downtown Action Committee, consisting of three hundred sixty-eight thousand square feet of office, eighty-four residential units, a two hundred five-room hotel, and some retail. Again, meeting the two hundred thousand square-foot minimum office requirement and the minimum two hundred-room hotel requirement. Since that time, we've had other projects that have not moved forward with office and/or hotel. Transit Village, which is still vested, the Opera Site, consisting of over a million square feet, approved back in two thousand and eight. And then, the original Cosmopolitan Submittal, which was a combination of office, hotel, and bank, they have since modified their plans to exclude office. None of these three projects are moving forward at this time. Mr. Green subsequently, in the past few months, has submitted an amendment to his original approval dating back to two thousand and sixteen, where he increased the amount of residential from eighty-four units to three hundred twenty-eight. The office was reduced from three sixty-eight to two hundred nine thousand square feet, and the hotel from two hundred five to two hundred and one rooms. But again, he was still maintaining the minimum two hundred thousand square feet of office and the two hundred hotel rooms that allowed him to go from ten to thirty stories. Looking at our Class A office today, again, we're talking about his One West Palm project. Three sixty Rosemary by Related, just east of the Publix, and Rosemary Square is under construction. One Flagler, although they received an approval from the Downtown Action Committee, is tied up in litigation at this time. And then, you're familiar with the action you took just last week on the tent site with Charles Cohen. So we anticipate an application coming to us. Again, all four of these projects have a Class A office component. With regard to hotels, the Canopy and the Bennett Flagler Banion Square are just coming online now, right when COVID nineteen hit. Three hundred and sixty total rooms. We're still in discussion with the Indigo Hotel at Railroad Avenue and Third Street. They have expressed an interest in continuing to move forward, so we will see if that happens. Also, the Cosmopolitan, which originally was an office and hotel component, is now solely hotel and apartment units. They have expressed the desire to move forward. So we'll see what happens on those two. And then, you've got other projects outlined in red. Transit Village, Opera, the Aloft, and the old Clematis Boutique Hotel are not moving forward. So the two that obviously are nearing completion, getting ready to open, are Flagler Banion Square and Canopy, three hundred sixty rooms. The Indigo and Cosmopolitan, we'll see if those move forward, but those two, coupled with West Palm, account for another six hundred twenty-nine. As the commission is aware, Palm Beach County is looking to expand the Convention Center. They've indicated they're losing in excess of sixty-eight thousand room nights a year. There was a study done, so we are coordinating and assisting the county in their efforts. They've indicated there's a shortfall right now between six hundred and nine hundred hotel rooms today. With regard to residential, we've got about eighteen hundred units that are entitled right now in our downtown. Some of these
Mr. Jason?
are moving forward. Others, we're waiting to see what happens. And then, just outside the downtown, Mr. Green also owns a project at the end of Clear Lake. We have two projects in Center Park that are moving forward, the District Flats under construction and the Jefferson Terminal District, and then, two projects just south of the Bristol and South Flagler. So almost three thousand residential units, both inside and just outside the downtown. So what happens as a result of COVID nineteen is anybody's guess. All the things that I happen to see indicates that we're going to be experiencing a lull over the next quarter. Hopefully, a year from now, things are going to get back to normal in terms of development. It's hard to estimate what's going to happen. Mr. Green has indicated that he doesn't see a market for office, doesn't see a market for hotel downtown. I'm more of an optimist. Certainly, his building and three sixty Rosemary are going to take another year for construction. So hopefully, by the time those two projects are open or done, we are back to normal with regard to the impacts of COVID nineteen. City staff has a concern about converting these buildings into purely residential, given our continued need for Class A hotel and the overabundance of residential that we're seeing downtown. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Quick question for you, which maybe you can answer. We had this project where we granted certain incentives for additional height. I am aware of the incentives that we granted in connection with the One Flagler project. What other projects, if any, also involve the city allowing either additional height because of certain incentives? I know we granted some incentives for Rosemary, right? Rosemary Square, not Rosemary Square, the
Three sixty Rosemary?
Yeah.
That was contained within the planned development. We didn't have any incentives there that allowed them to go to an increased height that wasn't permitted by the downtown master plan. That was regulated by the City Place D.R.I., so that really did not have a height limit. So that incentive really did not apply to them. Certainly, One Flagler, going from five to twenty-five, was an incentive that was provided, but that, again, was for the preservation of a landmark structure. There haven't been any other projects off the top of my head that I can think of that are utilizing that height to go to twenty-five stories.
Okay. Where I was going with that is, a significant concern that I have is the precedent that says that, once we cut a deal with a developer and they get certain benefits as a result of that deal, and then to turn around and for the developer to come back, for whatever reason, as legitimate as they may be, to say that, "Listen, I can't fulfill my end of the bargain," is disconcerting to me. And that's what we have here. Now, I know that I talked to Mr. Green over the weekend. I know he wanted to have a presence here, and I was going to give him a chance to speak. I don't see anyone from his team on this call. Have you received any calls that affect that they wanted to participate?
Mayor, I did. After the announcement was made, we were going to workshop this. I contacted John Schmidt and let him know that we were going to discuss it, but I was under the impression that the public usually doesn't speak at these, but he was aware.
I know they don't. I know they don't, but this is such a significant I thought I would give him a chance to at least articulate his position. Okay, we have some questions here.
Blanca had sent a request from Kathy DeFranco at Schmidt Nichols this morning. I sent them a link to participate, but I do not
That's all right. Oh, that's the moderator. Okay. Okay, well, we'll proceed if they come on and maybe we can Okay, Commissioner Neeran, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. I think, really, along those same lines. Mayor, I agree with the concern around setting precedent. However, I think the proof is in the pudding, and when I've spoken to Mr. Green, one of the big issues that he was having, and obviously exacerbated by COVID nineteen, is the lack of market around both hotel and Class A. And so, to your point, Mayor, and I guess this question is for city attorney, from a legal standpoint, other than setting precedent, which I don't take lightly, are there any legal issues or hurdles that we would have as a commission, given that, you know, when you talk about going from ten to thirty floors, and FRA of two point seven five to five point five, all contingent on hotel and office, Class A office, are there any legal hurdles that we need, we'd have to consider, again, beyond the precedent setting, which, again, I take very serious?
Well, you would have to go back and make the code changes that were necessary to do what's being requested, and it's applicable to all of the areas that are encompassed in, what is it, the quadrille garden district? Rick? Nope, you're on mute.
Rick, you're on mute. Okay, finish your talk, Kimberly.
At any rate, you would have to make code changes to allow for that residential component without the components that we put in place for both hotel and Class A office. And at the time that we made those changes, we certainly had studies and all of the things that were necessary to support the need for those uses. So we would similarly need the support to change the code regulations and probably a comp plan change as well.
Follow-up, Commissioner?
Thank you. And, I mean, as a commissioner, there are lots of details that I want to kind of dig into. This was first presented. I think I got a call from Mr. Green about a week and a half ago, maybe two weeks, concerning this possibility. So you know, I know this is a commission work session. I guess, ultimately, I'd be open as a commissioner to exploring what that might look like, given the circumstance. I think, at the end of the day, our job, or my job, is to put all projects in the most in the best position to be successful. And so but obviously, there are a lot of details to that. You outlined, Mr. Green, some of the issues around traffic, which are going to be critically important, and some other things, but I'm at least open to kicking the can down proverbial road, if you will, just to see what this might look like. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Lambert, you have a question, comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Comments, I guess, that Mr. Green and/or Mr. Schmidt, they are online now, so I want to get through the commissioner questions, at least the ones that have been identified, and give them a chance to speak. So let's get through these first. Commissioner Lambert?
Great, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Rick. I was just wondering if you could go back to the TCEA slide? I think you had a lot of data and information there, and I just want to make sure that I understand what you're not just what the data is telling us, but what the implications are for any changes that we may make. Do you mind just kind of summarizing that slide again?
Rick, you're muted.
I have the tech on my way to him right now.
Alright. Alright, tell him to quit talking, because we can't hear him. Commissioner, did you have questions that we can talk about in the meantime, or they all revolved around that particular slide?
I mean, I wanted to consider the information on that slide as well, you know, I
Okay, that's fine. We'll wait.
Sure, sure. Well, I mean, I can still share with you if you'd like.
Madam President, and then we'll come back. I'm just trying to keep this train moving. Madam President, did you have
Thank you, Mayor. I think my questions were directed towards Mr. Green as well, so I'll have to wait for him.
Okay. It looks like he has a tech in there, so we'll just
Any better?
Yeah, that's better.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I don't know. It keeps cutting in and out. I apologize. But with the TCEA, the arrangement that Palm Beach County and the state of Florida have with us
Show the slide? We don't see it.
I have it in my bag.
There's Mr. Green. That's not the slide.
Can you see it now?
No, I see Mr. Green.
Oh, I have it on my screen.
He's got the link to get on.
Alright, that's fine. Okay.
I have it up, but I don't know if you're seeing it, but
No, we aren't seeing it. At least, I'm not seeing it.
Rick, if you push that green share screen button.
Well, it's so nice to have an expert. Alright, now can we hear Rick? Now we can't hear Rick. Got the slide, but no Rick. Mr. Moderator, you know what's going on?
I've got the tech keys back there again now. Not sure. I'm going to have him dial in.
Okay.
Rick, go ahead and dial in if you can. One moment, Mayor. He's dialing in right now.
Enter your meeting ID, followed by
I'm going to do it on the phone here.
Walter, go ahead and mute his laptop audio, because it seems to be working now, so we're going to get feedback.
Enter your participant ID.
How do I get this Zoom to go completely up? I don't
As a panelist.
Okay, what's going on?
Mayor, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yes.
Yeah, I've got a tech, but for some reason, they can't get the PowerPoint back up.
Well, I'm looking at the PowerPoint.
No, we're looking at the PowerPoint now, Rick.
Oh, are you? Okay. Alright, I'm not seeing it on my screen, but alright. Alright, but to answer Commissioner Lambert's question, per Palm Beach County, we are required to maintain a ratio of zero point four six, and that's the mix of residential to non-residential per thousand square feet. So we're at point seven four now, based on our latest submittal to the county.
Okay, we didn't have the right screen, right slide.
I guess, Rick, what my question was is, can you talk a little bit about the ramifications of that? And just so that we, I mean, you deal with these numbers and the TCEA all the time, and I just want to make sure I fully understand.
Sure. The county and state's concern is that we maintain that minimum of zero point four six. Because we have so much residential right now, we could effectively not build another residential unit, and we still have five million square feet of non-residential to build. So the issue is that we're not in jeopardy of violating the agreement we have with Palm Beach County and/or the state, because that ratio is so high in residential. If it was the other way, and we had too much non-residential and not enough residential, that would be problematic. We can be over on the residential. The thought is that the more people that are living downtown, those people are living and working in a downtown environment. Under the ratio of zero point four six, it's the perfect mix, if you will, of people living downtown and going to their jobs downtown. When you have a number that's so inflated on the residential, yes, there's plenty of work for those people downtown, but because there's so much residential, a lot of those people are driving outside the downtown, but we're not going to be penalized for that.
Okay, so if I understand what you're saying is we're in compliance if we have more residential, but it might not be the optimum mix of residential and commercial for the environment that we're trying to build, have it be more walkable, and have people live, work, and play all in the same area where they're not driving in and out. So this could have an impact on our transportation, on our vehicle counts in this area?
No, not necessarily. I mean, again, the more residential you have downtown, certainly, that's going to make the retails certainly more viable. I don't think traffic from a residential project generally is less than a non-residential, so I don't think that's going to be an issue. But I think you hit the nail on the head. The optimum would be that balance of zero point four six. We're not going to be penalized if we're over that number. If it was inverted, then yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Rick, for the presentation today. One of the things that I think is really important for us as a city is to have some consistency in the agreements that we make. But I also do want to be conscious of changed conditions. So my question is, when did this project commence? Construction?
Mr. Green's on the line. I want to say it was
We had our groundbreaking around just about around a year ago.
Okay, so we're talking about a year ago?
Yeah, because we had the ground break. But, you know, it's a long ways to a ground break. We started working on getting going about a year before that.
So my question is, if we're talking about two years ago, when this project was undertaken, we've looked at a number of things, be it hotels, Class A office spaces, that were approved at that time, two years ago. So we're looking at this request now. I guess I'm struggling to understand what the changed condition is today that would not have been known two years ago, or even to the effect of, say, you know, construction had commenced, and we're at the ten-story place, for the applicant to come back at ten stories and say, "Hey, listen, we're not going to be able to fulfill the height incentive." So I'm curious as to what the changed condition is, because I know there's been a number of sightings of COVID. COVID has only been the last several weeks, and we're talking at a project that is over the past two years. So what is the set of changed conditions that exist today that didn't exist over the past two years?
So this is for me, this question? So this is for me, this question.
I was asking Mr. Green, because he was the one speaking, it's up to the mayor as to.
Yeah, Jeff, hold off for a minute, because I want you to maybe walk through everything.
It's to Mr. Green, sorry about that.
All right, Rick, why don't you, if you can, respond to that? And if not, then we'll bookmark that question and go on to Commissioner Fox, who also wants to.
Yeah, well, the project was approved in January of 2016, so four years ago. You know, I don't know that the demand for Class A office existed in 2016, just like it does today, so I can't really count for any changed conditions. I don't know how much of an impact COVID-19 is gonna have. I certainly, it's a serious impact it's having on our economy, but, you know, I fully expect things are gonna get back to normal, there's gonna be a lull, I suspect, over the next six months to a year, but I think the demand for Class A is still gonna be there, you know, certainly a year from now.
Did you have a follow-up, Madam President?
Yes, and so the completion of this building is projected for about a year out. So as much as we've had changed conditions as of recent months, there is a year, of which, you don't have a crystal ball, neither do I, to understand what's going to happen, we still have a significant time in front of us. So the occupancy on this building is gonna happen within the next six months. Is that correct?
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Fox, you had a question?
I had a question before Mr. Jeff Green got on the call, but he can probably speak to this more. I had heard, he had indicated that his hotel partner had decided to leave the project, and that, you know, was having a hard time finding another hotel partner that thought in this climate that this would be, you know, the ideal place to have another hotel. So I was just wondering how that would affect the, I guess, the zoning, or the additional floors that we had given, if there wasn't a hotel, would the project be changing anyway?
Rick, you can speak to that, because they had an option to be the Class A or hotels. You wanna speak to that?
Correct. Mayor and Commissioner, what, if, one of the things I had discussed with Mr. Jeff Green was that if he had done one use or the other, either the hotel or the Class A, if he didn't think the market was there for Class A, he could do the hotel and still be entitled to go to a 25-story height limit. So that was one of the options that we had discussed when we spoke last week. My understanding is they're at floor 26 right now, but that certainly is something that the commission could consider, do one of the two uses and stop it at floor 25.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner? All right, Mr. Green, I'm gonna go, Jeff Green, I'm gonna go outside of what we normally do with these, and give you a chance to make your pitch for why you should be entitled to go all residential, but please be efficient with your.
Sure. Okay, well, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. Yeah, so I think I could address, I think, the question about what has changed. When we started this project, we didn't have any leasing at all, but we, you know, I kinda relied on, you know, what I'd heard from Kelly Smallridge saying, there's all this demand, everybody else, I enlisted the services of Cushman Awakefield Mark Pateman, who you all know, who's just about one of the most well-respected leasing agents in the community, and I gave him a listing, and in two years, we don't have a single lease for office space. Now, this is pre-pandemic, so this is before you've heard all, you've heard around the globe about people changing their work habits and not using as much office space, we didn't have a single lease. If you read the letter, which I think you got from me, from Mark Pateman, and again, he, just, you know, Mark Pateman only makes money by signing leases, he's not in the business of not having listings, he wants to, by writing a letter saying, don't build a building, he's giving up any possibility of making money off of this building. And I said, look, write the, write what you've told me, and what he wrote was that there's no leases whatsoever, none, none for my building, it's not like this is the pen, and we lost our big tenant, we never had a tenant. And then, and the related, the only, they have three leases, and two of them are coming from other buildings in West Palm Beach. And what I thought truthfully was that I'd be able to do the same thing, I thought I'll go to all the tenants of Phillips Point, say, guess what, I, you wanna, you either be on the 28th floor facing the water, or sitting on the 8th floor facing the alley, and I'll just steal tenants, but we haven't been able to do that, people just aren't moving. And so the office just hasn't been successful. Hotel, I was having trouble getting a fly, but I did get Marriott was going to do a luxury collection, the five-star brand, despite the fact they just opened the Marriott Autograph, and now they're not willing to do that, because I understand, you know, when Marriott already has a Marriott Residence Inn and a Marriott Autograph downtown, so by opening a fourth brand, it just takes, when someone goes on their Bonvoy thing, we'd be taking from that place, and then I'm willing to do that, but they, I thought I had that lined up. So now, because I don't have a flag for the hotel, and I don't have any office leasing, I can't get financing. I got this thing started, assuming that I would have the 50% lease by now, have the hotel ready to go, and then go get a lender to pay for the rest of this project, which I don't have. I can get financing for residential, because lenders like residential, and for the, the truth is, downtown is still 95% leased. So in order for me to continue this, to have financing, I, the only way I can do it is with residential. If not, I obviously can stop now, and we can just leave it on the market, and if, if these commercial tenants come, like everyone thinks they will, then at that point, I think once we get, and if the hotel market really does well, when, if it recovers quickly, we'll be in a position to then maybe get a flag from Hilton or Marriott, which you have to have, one of those, the only two. A Hyatt would not even talk to me, although I'm, I'm saying they're looking at the Cosmopolitan site, which it does, but they wouldn't even, because of the Hyatt place, would not even consider, when we approached them, doing a Hyatt brand there. So, and Hilton is off the table because of the Hilton, they don't wanna cannibalize the Hilton sales. So at this point, we can't build, we can't get financing to continue. So our two choices are either we stop this week at the 27th floor, which I've kinda told them to plan on doing, take the cranes down, stop where we are, I've obviously got a lot of money invested, and then over the next few years, try to see if this materializes, or, you know, or, or if we can do residential, I'm prepared to, to, to go out and do this. And I've been told by Bank of America, where I have a relationship, that I can get financing for the rest of the project, if it's, if it's all residential, because they believe in that income. The two things I'll just wanna say is, you know, that the, obviously, the negative of closing down now is there are typically 300 people working at that site, and those 300 people will be unfortunately added to the unemployment line, there's nothing I can do about it, I can't personally support them if we close the project down, which is part of the last thing this community needs, is 300 unemployed people. But, and then the tax revenue, you know, I think that, you could talk about all the ratios you want, but let's face it, it's a different world. When those ratios were made for the county, it was a different world, as far as, you know, the gig economy and people working from home, they're gonna do more of now. And you know that, everyone knows that, when we emerge from this, this pandemic, there's a very good chance that, you know, City Place may be 50% empty, Clematis Street may be 50% empty, they're close to, they're, they're not doing that great to begin with, you know the City Place has been in foreclosure over and over again. I know that many of those tenants are not doing that well, and you will see if these upstairs restaurants open and the theaters, but nevertheless, the issue really is, you know, the city is gonna be, is gonna, could use, will need revenue, I imagine, with sales tax dropping dramatically and everything else, and again, this could be a revenue generating, tax-paying, property tax-paying, income property. I get the idea of not wanting to make change of our precedent, and not wanna bend the rules, but we're in a once-in-a-century pandemic, I didn't, the Fed was planning on ever spending $4 trillion, or the government's planning on spending trillions of dollars to the budget deficit, but the fact that that's happening should, you know, in the city of West Palm Beach should be able to see that, the whole world is, is doing what they have to do to make it through this period. And I'm not, I'm not gonna make any money in this department, anybody can run the numbers, it's all apartments, the thing's gonna be 550,000 feet, run the highest rent number you can think of in West Palm Beach, and look what the net income will be versus the cost of building this. I'm just trying to get this thing done, get out of it. But those are my two choices, and, you know, I prefer, obviously, to get a positive from you folks, and, and make it a viable building that continues and, and works. And the other thing I just wanna finalize, finally say is, if there is tremendous demand for office space, you've got two more buildings ready to go that are already approved, three with the Transit Village, but just, and then if it's, if there's tremendous demand for hotels, you've got, again, two hotels ready to go. So it's not like there's nowhere to put them, or there's nowhere to do them. I own residential apartments downtown, we're getting a lot of notices right now for the end of the month because of this pandemic, but I know that historically, they've been okay, so I'm certainly prepared to do that. In fact, I'm open to questions.
All right, thank you, Jeff, for presenting your case. Mr. Green, Rick Green, talk to us, and I think you may have had a slide, about the number of residential units that are in or around that district, because I think a number of residential units are either contemplating being constructed or actually being constructed. Do we have that data?
Yes, Mayor, it was 1,800 units was the number that's entitled right now in downtown, or in the process of going through the approval process, and then roughly another 1,200 units was just outside the downtown, two projects in Center Park, one in the Jefferson Terminal District, the District Flats, a couple of projects on the South Florida, South Flagler Corridor. So a total of 1,800 entitled downtown, 1122 just outside the downtown, so nearly 3,000 residential units.
I'm not counting the Jefferson Warehouse District, that's a bit far away.
Okay, well, then it's, it's 1,800, and that consists of Mr. Green's project, Banyan Place, the Macy's.
We're not building the Banyan Place, we're not building any of those offices, so this is the only.
I'm going through the list, so it's the Macy's site, it's the Grand Project.
Rick, before you, moderator, can you get to that particular slide?
Rick is controlling it.
All right, Rick, you gotta get to the slide with the, not that one.
Yeah, and for some reason, it's, I'm having all kinds of technical issues here, it's not popping up, this is what the tech was in here trying to fix earlier.
All right.
I'll go ahead and share the deck for you, Rick, just tell me what slide to go to, hang on. Okay. It's slide 19, Jason.
Okay.
So the Macy's we know is moving forward, the Grand is moving forward, 303 Banyan is going to DAC this month, or I'm sorry, in May, 625, we believe, is moving forward, Clematis Place is Mr. Green again, as is Banyan Place, no movement there, 401 DeTura was getting ready to start right before the pandemic, I presume they're still moving forward, and then Flagler Station, we are taking to the DAC in a couple of months, that's moving forward. So with the exception of maybe Banyan Place and Clematis Place, we expect all the other projects to move forward. So that's about 1,300 residential units in the downtown.
And what's the total number, Jeff, if you went, Jeff Green, if you went all residential, how many units would that be?
Well, I think it'll probably be, we haven't designed it exactly, but it'll be 400 to 500 units. I just wanna mention, by the way, and that ended downtown, you know, I can't imagine anything better, some of, we all love downtown, than having 700, 800 people all walking up and down to that north end, and tying loft in place in the north end of downtown, Clematis Street and Quadrell, and, because it's kinda no man's land right now, but that's what it would be, it would be 400 to 500 units.
All right, that's about 1700 units, but there'd be no residential?
But right now.
No commercial over there?
But right now, it's 250 units, so it's an additional 200. We'd be replacing the, it would be an additional 200 to 250, we already have, you know, half of that, because half is all.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Lambert, you had a question? For Jeff Green, for Rick Green, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question and then a few comments. Rick, based on what Mr. Jeff Green was talking about, some different options and stopping construction, if we don't choose to make these changes, were there any time constraints related to the incentives that we provided back in 2015, 16?
There were none.
Okay. And my comments are, you know, I wanna be sensitive to the concerns that Class A office space users, you know, especially right now, are rethinking their operations, and possibly downsizing, and just thinking about where they're gonna put their staff, whether it'll be remotely or in offices, but I, I do have concerns on making decisions, you know, here it's relatively short-term, you know, the situation that we're in, and this is such a prominent location, and will definitely have long-term impacts. I just would wanna make sure that we have thoroughly vetted any, you know, decision that we would make to make changes here.
All right. Madam President, you had a question for Rick Green?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. You know, and it kinda goes back to what we were talking about, changed conditions, and Jeff Green had kind of alluded to what conditions had changed for him, and it almost sounds like there was a business model that is no longer working. And so I wanna be really sensitive to the fact that the last thing I want is concrete structures in the sky, but I think that, you know, the city is upholding their end of what they promised the citizens, and we need to hold our development community to what they promised the citizens. But that being said, it sounds like, in what you specified, looking at two different uses of floor 26, there is the opportunity to go back and work with Jeff Green and the city, and say, we can alter the uses within the code that already exists, to try to keep the project moving forward. Yes, it won't be the original project at 30 stories, but, I mean, if we're at the place where it would have been entitled to 25, we're at floor 26, let's figure out what incentive package equals that, that extra floor, to see if we can alter the project within the structure that already exists, then it keeps the, the agreement with what we had, you know, with my former colleagues on the dais, and what was promised to the citizens of West Palm Beach, but it also allows for Mr. Green perhaps to continue along with a project that is different than, than what was anticipated, in order to try to accommodate for some of the changed conditions that he is experiencing. So is there room to work within the parameters of what we have now?
Well, to get from 10, I know this is a question for Rick Green, but to get from 10 to 25, you'd have to have a hotel or Class A office space, to get from 10 to 25, okay? And here we are now, he's gotten the benefit of his bargain, but we've not gotten what we, what we bargained for as a city. But Rick Green, you can answer the question.
No, that's exactly correct, Mayor. To get from 10 to 25, it would have to be either hotel or Class A office use, one or the other, if he did both, that allowed Mr. Green to go to 30 stories.
So to clarify, he could, he could do one use or the other, he would have to pick either Class A office space or hotel, and build one of those to get to virtually where he is right now, in height.
Correct, correct, and that was, that was a discussion I had with Mr. Green last week.
Is, is that not an amiable direction to move in for all parties?
He doesn't wanna do either, that's why we're here today.
Okay, so the sticking point is still that, no, we've tried to make this concession, Mr. Jeff Green is not prepared to move forward in that direction.
Well, if there's another incentive that you guys could think of that would help the city, like we have a ground floor, 8,000 for retail space, he said, okay, we want you to donate it for the city to use for 10 years for free or something, if there's something else that could happen, I mean, I, look, I think the city is better off having this building done, and I'd, I'd rather just finish it, but I can't do office hotels, I can't finance it, so either we, I have to stop, which is, it's, you know, there's this cost involved, and to take the cranes down and then redeploy them, and it's hundreds of thousands and, you know, but I'd have to do that, and just revisit this in a few years, and see if we get the office leasing or a hotel-like thing comes along, or get it done, and if there's something else you, the city wanted as a, so they could feel they got some incentive for doing this, I'm certainly open to it, as long, I can't do anything with the apartment rents, because I need those rents to pay to get a loan, but I have retail space on the ground floor, if there's other things you can think of that we could substitute for this office hotel, which the city doesn't need right now, because you have two brand-new hotels that are gonna probably be struggling for a while coming out of this pandemic, the last thing they need is a third hotel, an office building related, is just trying to lease up a building, they're building right now on specs, the last thing they need right now is another building. So maybe someday you'll need it for this site, so that's, if the city just needs to feel I'm not trying to take advantage of it, I'm not, then think of something that I can do for the city that would make, would be good for the city, and warrant this, this thing that's already started, finishing.
I'm still very concerned about the precedent that would be set, because we negotiate with developers as a city from time to time, and we have to be. And we have to be known as a party, uh, that, that's going to stick to, to our bargain. And otherwise, we won't have any credibility a- as we enter these negotiations. Uh, Commissioner Neering?
Yeah, I think, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, that's, that's kind of where I was going, uh, in terms of perhaps thinking about that, obviously, we're not going to be able to do it on this, uh, in this venue, kind of digging into it. But, you know, we talked about Class A, we talked about hotel, but might there might, might there be other opportunities to have, if you will, a win-win, uh, for the city? What is not a win-win, in my estimation, is having, um, a building that is not complete for the next two or three years. Uh, I don't see that as a threat. Um, I see that as, as, as just an option, but I think it's a bad option. The other thing is too, I, I, you know, very clear from the beginning that I, I don't take lightly, uh, changing precedent. But I have to say, when this was, and I think it was right before I came on the commission, just over five years ago, when this project was initially approved, or maybe I'm wrong on that, but it was, again, Class A, um, it was hotel, and there was all of this talk around Class A. And, uh, and I, and I fit into it like everyone else. I still go back, the proof is in the pudding. And the reality is, the market hasn't, that hasn't bared out, you know, for whatever reason. Um, and again, uh, Mayor, I want to be clear. I, I think your point is very valid and one that I, I, I totally support in terms of being very careful about setting precedent, especially around development. But I am open to, uh, seeing if there might be other opportunities for a win-win, given that it looks like perhaps hotel and Class A, um, are not in the cards in this moment, where we can still have this, uh, project completed. What, what I don't want to do, as, as one-fifth of a vote, is to, um, have cranes come down and this, this shell of a building sit there for two or three years. I, I don't want any part of that. I, I'd like to really be able to dig into and get around again, realizing we're not going to be able to do it on, on, at this commission work session about what are some other opportunities to perhaps, or incentives that we can maybe come up with where, you know, it's, we're meeting each other halfway. So, um, Jeff, Mr. Green, not quite sure, or Mayor, what the outcome of, of this particular item was, but I'll just say, um, I would be supportive of figuring out how we move forward, giving that, given that, uh, Class A and hotel are probably off the table. Um, but I'd like to see us, uh, continue to move this forward with some other options with the ultimate goal of the, uh, project being completed.
Well, listen, I don't want to see, uh, a, a shell of a building either. But on the other hand, uh, that is not the risk that we as a city undertook. When we cut this deal, and again, the incentives were brought to the city. Jeff wanted more height. Uh, his team came to us and said, in exchange for more height, we will build one or the other or both. Hotel, Class A office building. The change in business circumstances, that's not the risk of the city. That's a business risk that's undertaken by the developer. And so it's not the city's responsibility now to bail out the developer. And if you talk about the change in circumstances, I'm sorry, but that's not the risk that we took. Now, we had a developer come in here last week when we looked at the tent site, and I asked the question. I said, how optimistic are you about the future? And they were talking about Class A office space. You heard the answer. That particular developer, and I don't know who's right. That particular developer said, no, we can do this. We can lease it out. So I'm not convinced that there is no market for Class A office space. Mr. Green says there isn't. I got another developer who says there, there is. I've got another developer related who's looking, once his litigation is resolved, to looking to build down on Flagler. You, you know, all of the data that comes in to me from sources outside this particular project says there's still a demand for Class A office space. So I'm not willing to just throw in the towel and say there's no demand for Class A office space with this particular situation. I'm not going to do that. And again, the developer, in this case, Mr. Green, has gotten the benefit of his bargain. He's got twenty-eight stories up there. If he had come to us at ten feet or maybe even fifteen feet, I may have a different question. I may have a different response. He's gotten what he wants. He's going to be able to get residential at twenty-five stories, which are probably more valuable than residential at ten stories. He's gotten the benefit of the bargain. So why is it up to us to change our deal and to change our ass? We didn't put, we, we didn't create this situation. Okay, um, uh, Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor, and I think you may have actually already addressed the question I had, uh, which was with regard to at the twenty-sixth floor, whereas that's where he is now, or the twenty-seventh floor, uh, that required both a hotel and a commercial component. So he's already above that, you know, that twenty-five, which would have required one of those two components. So he would have been limited to twenty feet. I, I believe I'm correct with that, right?
Ten stories.
Ten stories, okay. Okay, um, I do, you know, agree to some degree, though, with Commissioner Neering that it sounds like this project isn't going to go forward as we had hoped. And is there some middle ground, you know, Mr. Jeff Green had indicated that maybe he could provide some benefit to the city, you know, with regard to the, the first floor or something? Is there a need? Is there anything that we could explore, um, just so that it could be a win-win for both? But otherwise, I do agree with the sentiments expressed by my colleagues and you, Mayor, um, that, you know, I'm not so sure that the circumstances with COVID nineteen are what, you know, brought about this change, you know, i- in, in the market or, or whatever. I, I think that might have already been happening. Um, or it may have been, you know, just something where there was a change in, in the desire of the developer. I, I'm not sure. But is there anything that we could do, uh, short of, of having an empty building, you know, a, a partially completed building sit there for years?
Yeah, anything you could do. You could cave in and you could let it be all residential. And I don't know how you quantify, and maybe there, people smarter than I, how you quantify the value of either a, a, a hotel or a Class A, uh, two hundred thousand square feet of Class A office space. I don't know how you quantify that. Um, but if there is a way, and I don't know, you, you, say that is value X, then what we would have to get in exchange for that is something which is equivalent to value X, which I don't know what that would be. Um, but, but that's what we've given up here, is either a hotel or a Class A office space because the developer has achieved the height that both of those have given that developer. So what the city would need in return is something equivalent to the value. And I don't know how you can put a value on it, of Class A, two hundred thousand square feet of Class A office space or two hundred rooms of a hotel. I don't know what that looks like. But that is what we as a city would have to get in exchange for that because we've already given what the developer asked for in terms of additional rent. So eight thousand square feet at the bottom of the, no, that's not going to do it. Uh, okay, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I mean, I want to first say, I don't take lightly at all the idea of changing precedent, but I do think we are in unprecedented times that maybe we need to be a little bit more realistic about what we're looking at in the future of our city, that it's a little bit different than, or very different, you know, than it was, um, at the time these deals were made. I think hearing the idea of, um, the opportunity to keep three hundred people working that might otherwise not have a job, that is something I would want to explore. I, you know, I, over the weekend, I was at a food distribution where people were in line for eight hours looking for food. I think, you know, I certainly, you know, want to explore options for peo- keeping people on the job. So, you know, I just want to consider, you know, what else we can talk about in terms of, you know, what Commissioner Neering, Peduzzi were saying. Are there other options that might be benefits to, um, the public in terms of affordable housing or something else that we could, um, look at for that building in order to make it work and to keep our city moving?
Uh, and I appreciate that, but, but I think we also have to keep in mind, uh, a- a- and, and Jeff Green, you could correct me if I'm wrong, this is not a COVID nineteen issue. Uh, we probably would have had this conversation if COVID, if we did not have a pandemic because what, Mr., what I heard from Jeff Green is that he could not get a flag for his hotel. He did not have a tenant for his Class A office space. So I don't see this as a pandemic-related concern. This is a change in business circumstances concern on behalf of the developer. And yes, I would love to see three hundred people also keep their jobs. But we as city leaders cannot make short-sighted decisions. We can't make a decision today, which may have implications that are far-reaching as we move forward as a city. And yes, we're in a very bad time now. I agree with that. But Commissioners, I would urge you to think long-term and big picture for our city. And the precedent that we as negotiators for the city, the precedent that that sets, because listen, putting aside the pandemic, there's going to be another developer that comes in and says, circumstances have changed. I can't do what I promised you that I could do. The change, business circumstances argument is one that will be on the tip of every developer's tongue going forward as we do business with it. Madam President, yeah, Jeff, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I, on this issue of commercial vac- of commercial leasing, I mean, if you, the, the building has been on the market for lease for two years. It's been, they've done an enormous marketing campaign, and we don't have any tenants. It's not, I'm not, I haven't turned any down. The only prospective tenant I had was called Industrious, which is not a tenant. It's a WeWork-type thing where we build the thing out and they sublease the space. That's the only tenant by where that Related has. It's called Spaces, and they build it out, and then they go, a space that has to sublease. So the commercial market is what it is. It, it's, it's, I, I don't know how people can say there's all this demand. If there was demand, obviously, Mark Pateyman is not lying to you and saying that I turned down any. He has not a single lease in this building in two years and long before the pandemic. And what has changed during the pandemic is financing. There was much looser financing at banks before the pandemic. And I, and I was led to believe, no problem, Jeff, go get it started. We'll finance it after you do the first half of it for the second half of the building. And I, and I did have a flag. I had luxury collection by Marriott ready to go. So this has changed because of the pandemic. And, you know, look, I can, we can wait. I, I'm not going to be, you know, I'm not going to be happy about it, but if we, we take, if we close it down this week, we'll leave it on the market. If there's all this demand and Kelly Smalls, she lives near, you know, a hundred, two hundred thousand per tenant, then we'll go to a bank and get a loan and we'll start up. If it takes three years, five years, I don't know how long it'll take. I'm not saying this any, but I can't build it because I don't have the finance to build it. So I can build apartments. If you want apartments there, I mean, I said it before, and you want to keep the people working and also get the property tax revenue for the city. It's going to be a very valuable building as a completed building, as opposed to just a, a closed-down construction site. But that's something that, you know, I know the precedent thing, but you know what? When you have a, this is a once-in-a-hundred-year pandemic. This is not me saying I just changed my mind. I'd like to build apartments. And, you know, I, I, whatever you guys decide, you have to decide. I mean, I really, uh, uh, I, I would, I, I, I think the city is better off having these residences here. And I don't, you know, I don't know what I got out of it. I can tell you that the rents in Parkline, which is a high-rise versus the rents in City Palms are like ten cent different per foot. So you don't get much bigger rents for high-rise construction, and the cost is much, much greater. And I can tell you one more thing, that this office hotel tower, because it was built as an office hotel tower, we put elevator stacks already for both in the core. So Rick Green could tell you more, but let's, he's in construction stuff. But I can tell you, there's thirty percent of the building is gone because it's the core of the building from having two elevator stacks. So we're only getting in that tower seventy percent. It's a fifteen thousand floor, and we only have ten thousand five hundred feet to rent out. It's a very inefficient, difficult project, and I'm just rarely bailing out and, and getting it done and losing less money now versus just stopping it and waiting and see if I can find those tenants in a hotel down the road. I just don't think with these two new hotels that have just opened and everything else that's out there, it's going to be a long time till there'll be demand for yet another hotel and another office building. Related, again, they haven't rented that up, so that has to get rented. But then all these new ones you say are starting, so I don't know how I'm going to even get tenants when they're going to be. And I don't know how they're going to start when I'm stopped. I mean, I don't think they're going to have a tough time getting a construction one when there's a stopped building that's about to get started. I'm just trying to make this work, so I'm flexible to anything that you, you Commissioners, the Mayor feel.
Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. I had one question for Rick Green and then, and then a couple of comments. Um, my question is, Mr. Green, in buildings typical like this, um, commercial office spaces, when developers start to build, is it typical that you start building a building with zero leases? Or do you typically pre-lease, um, before starting to build?
Generally, Commissioner, you, you pre-lease. Um, there's no fast rule, but generally, most office developers like to have a thirty, forty percent pre-lease before they start construction.
Okay, so I, I guess, you know, I, I want to make my position clear on this because it, it, the numbers still, to me, sound questionable. So we're talking about, uh, we started building on a building, um, where we had a developer start building on a building with no pre-leases. So there wasn't really any guaranteed income or, or guaranteed less fees out of that. But we're also talking about, you know, when, when Jeff Green speaks about the number of units, there's not a verified number of units, so it makes me question if we have financials behind that. So I, I hold strong to the fact that, uh, I, I don't want this building to shut down, but if this building shuts down, it would not because the city of West Palm Beach did not fulfill their requirement here. The city of West Palm Beach is upholding what we guaranteed and what we guaranteed our residents. And, and so, um, I, I hold firm on the fact that I want, um, to still see those uses. Um, there, I'm not, um, privy to updated statistics, nor will any of us be in the next year or two when this opens, and I think that that time will play out. But we have upheld our side of this. If there is a way to work within the parameters of what we have approved to make this happen, and I think that we've made some of those concessions back to say one use or the other, I would like to see that happen because the last thing I want to see is two empty buildings. But if, if that is the choice that the developer makes, it will not be because the city of West Palm Beach did not uphold their side of the deal. And, uh, you know, unfortunately, I think that's the situation that it sounds like we have ourselves in here. That's not me digging my heels in and saying, I wouldn't support some other, you know, idea that, that came up. Um, you know, certainly willing to, to see if there were some way to make it work. But I think we have done what we, we have said we are going to do, and we have delivered on our side of the bargain. So, um, I, I leave it to hearing more as, as it comes down the line and, and trying our best to keep West Palm Beach working. But again, you know, I think as we've demonstrated on this call, we've, we've done what we can to, to make this happen.
Commissioner Neering, you got a follow-up?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rick Green, can you recall again, this, this project was first approved, I believe, over five years ago? And when we talked about going from ten to thirty stories, can you recall what the options were again? I know we land, where we, where we landed was Class A office, which at that time, and again, if you're in the city, you know, every business article written in the Sunday paper said, West Palm Beach needs Class A. I mean, that was just a, a theme throughout the city. All the talking heads within the city were saying it, it, Class A, Class A. So it is worth it. My question is, uh, Rick Green, what were the options beside hotel and Class A? Were there any, was there, was there this list of items that a developer could choose in order to get to the thirty floors? Can you recall anything outside of those two?
Yes, Commissioner. Um, actually, it was April thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. It was ordinance forty-five, forty-seven dash fifteen that created this special incentive within the Quadra Garden District. And that incentive really pertained to just those two uses, either two hundred hotel rooms or two hundred thousand square feet of Class A office. Again, keeping in mind, we had not had any new Class A office built until, or since, uh, the City Place Tower in two thousand and eight. There was a demand. We, we've met with several folks with the BDB trying to lure Class A office tenants into West Palm Beach. We just didn't have the capacity. As we were going through the OBD, remember that we had vacancy rates four, five percent in our Class A office. We just did not have the available space. And the other thing to keep in mind is that, you know, it's difficult, if not impossible, to predict the future. But we're talking about a period of time that's a year out. It's not what's happening today. What's the market going to be a year out? We did reach out to Related last week. They've indicated that their three sixty Rosemary Tower is about forty percent leased, and they expect when the building is done, a year from now, um, that about forty percent of their tenants are going to be from outside of this region. Um, but the incentive, Commissioner, to answer your question, was solely for hotel and Class A office.
And Rick, if I'm not mistaken, Jeff Green's team came to us with the proposal. Jeff Green's team came to us with the proposal. We didn't suggest this. They came to us. Yes, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Nearing, you got a follow-up?
Yeah, my only point in that is, again, and I, and I'm not here to, 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 to say what it was. Jeff Green's, uh, development and, and his company coming to us. What I'm saying is in the atmosphere was, as a newer Commissioner, was that we absolutely needed Class A office. I just, I just really wanted to kind of make that point.
Um, and that has not changed. I, I, I'm still a believer that we, West Palm Beach needs Class A office space.
Not disagree, not disagreeing.
No, no, I, 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 I've not seen any evidence to the contrary. That we are now, we don't need all Class A office space anymore.
Can I follow up?
You have another follow-up? Yeah.
Well, I, I didn't complete it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, so it, I want to be clear on this point because I don't want to leave this Zoom call. My, my approach on this, I, I, I don't see this as a COVID- nineteen issue. I, I do believe COVID- nineteen exacerbated, uh, an, an issue, in this issue. The other thing is my desire to perhaps get to a place, um, where both sides can feel that some needs were met. Um, has nothing to do with, with, with caving in or bailing out a developer, really isn't. As a Commissioner, my goal is, um, to set the city up for success, given the variables. I get the precedent setting. Um, I would not be opposed to it if we could, in fact, get to a point where, um, to, to your point, Mayor, and I don't know what that looks like. What does Class A office, what does hotel look like on the other side? Maybe, maybe there isn't anything. My point is, I just did not want to totally, and I realize timing is essential in this. I didn't want to leave this Zoom call just saying that, no, you know, Mr. Jeff Green, go ahead and, and, and call the cranes and go ahead and shut it down. I, as one-fifth of the Commission, I just wanted to say, whatever we could do, keep the conversation going. Doesn't mean that that's not where we ultimately land. I would be in support of doing that. So I really, really want to be clear because I, I, I don't want the theme of this as, and if Tony is on the, on the call, written that a Commissioner is willing to bail out or cave in, that's not the approach that I'm taking. Really what I'm talking about is, here are the variables that are in front of us. Um, and today, in this moment, it looks like we only have two options. I believe that we have more options, but we'll have to explore that. And I don't think that can be done in a one-hour-long call.
Okay, um, but our city attorney needed to make a statement, then I'll get to Commissioner Lambert. Yeah, yes, Madam Attorney.
I, I just wanted to make a quick statement, you know, from what I hearing so that our record is clear, that what we're doing is not negotiating with a developer changed terms of a particular development order, but rather what we're talking about is legislative action wherein this body would be looking at whether or not they want to change the zoning code. So it's a legislative action. Currently, your zoning code allows for what was created, these incentives, to allow the development to change from what was currently permissible to something else by applying incentives. So what you're looking at is changing your code. And that's legislative action that would be applicable in all of the Quadro Business District. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that, that that was clear.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you for, for clarifying that. Uh, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, um, you brought up a point earlier, um, that you asked, uh, you know, what is Class A office space? What is hotel space equal to right now? Um, you know, I, I think we haven't explored that. And I realize, you know, I want to stand firm in that we're holding up our end of the bargain and would like developers to hold up their end of the bargain. And while understanding that this is not a COVID pandemic-related issue, we are dealing with COVID pandemic-related outcomes and situations. Is there something that we might want need now that we didn't then? Um, so just, I, I, I realize again, as I think a number of us have said, we can't really just come up with that answer right now, but I'm, I'm curious as to what that might be.
Well, I, 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 I don't know what that is or what, what, even what the, the, the dollar value of that. My thinking is two hundred rooms of a hotel or two hundred thousand square feet of Class A office space. Over time, what is the value of that? Do you do a present value calculation? And that is to, in effect, what the city would, I, I believe the city would need to receive in exchange. I don't know what that is. I don't know how much money that is. I don't know how many dollars it are, but I, it's pretty significant. I, 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 I venture to you, it's pretty significant. Uh, but that would have to be the calculus that would get me to, to making any change to the zoning code or something like that. Because that is what we bargained for five years ago, whenever it was, as a city. And if we are going to be taken seriously when we make deals with developers, we need to stick to our bargain. I, I don't see any, any, anywhere around that. And as long as I'm CEO, I'm not going to support, uh, making those kinds of changes unless we receive something equivalent in return. And I haven't heard that. It is not up to us as a city to propose it. It's not our project. It's Jeff Green's project. So if, 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 if he wants to get creative and come to us and say, "In addition to going all residential, I will submit X," I don't know what that is, then we could talk about it. But the decision before us today, it's not really a decision, it was not voting, we're just taking temperature, is whether we want to move ahead with some kind of amendment to the zoning code to accommodate, uh, uh, an all-residential with this, uh, building that's now twenty-eight stories high. Um, but that's really kind of the, the question and whether we get there or not, it depends on what else is on the table. Commissioner Sho, uh, Madam President, you got a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was mulling over questions via Madam City Attorney. When we're talking about looking at a whole district, I mean, I definitely feel like, sitting on this call, I, I don't have all that information. Because now, you know, making sure that we're considering that, that wider view. Um, you know, I guess I'm, I'm looking to see what is the action item today. And it sounds like we're looking for some input via this particular development. But I think what the wider, the wider context of this is, is we're only talking about one project within an entire district. So what are the needs of the entire district? And that's something that I'm willing to take a look at. But, you know, I also want to be mindful that we do have an agreement in place. And it sounds like we're talking about something, you know, Jeff Green is talking about something that's very eminent from this body. I don't hear that we're ready to make that decision or request for approval today. Um, so I guess I'm just curious as to where do we go from here?
Well, here's, here's where we could go from here. This was put on, uh, to assess the willingness of the Commission to take that next step, which is to consider, uh, an amendment to the zoning for, uh, the Quadro Business District, uh, to accommodate the request to allow, uh, one West Palm to be an all-residential building. Right? Uh, so that's why we're here discussing, is we do workshops, we don't make decisions, we don't take votes. The question is whether this is something that somebody that we want to put on the agenda, which is the specific, uh, request to change the zoning. That is the question before us. Um, and, and so we, we've had the discussion. And so, uh, I don't know. Um, I don't feel that there is sufficient, uh, uh, e- evidence for me to want to put it on the agenda to change the zoning. Uh, now, that doesn't mean we can't continue discussions with Mr. Green on his particular project. Um, and, uh, he's, he's heard the, uh, discussion today. Uh, he's got to do what he has to do as a developer. Does that mean that all conversations in? I don't think so, but, you know, um, just as he came to us and said, "I want to do all residential," he could come back to us and say, "I, I'd like to do X, I like to do Y." But the decision before us today is whether we need to, uh, put on the agenda the question of changing the zoning for the Quadro Business District.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, I know you've talked about Quadro. I just want to mention one thing is that Quadro was already, almost all of Quadro has already zon- zoned twenty-five stories up until where this was. I think that my understanding, and, and again, I'm not an expert on the zoning of West Palm, but my understanding is that prior, prior that when the Quadro District was done, was twenty-five stories, they stopped at the courthouse because this was so far from any development. Wasn't close to City Place, wasn't close to Columbus. They just never made it twenty-five stories. But there's no reason it couldn't have been twenty-five stories. Because everything else on Quadro isn't, if anything, it's not blocking anyone's views. It's, you know, it's, it, it made, made sense. It could have been that, that height. So, but I, I, it sounds to me like the, you know, I have to make a decision now because we're, we're gonna, we have one more floor to pour. We can't have, you know, uh, as it turns out, in the seventy mile an hour winds, there was a bit of an accident and a bunch of forms blew over on this weekend. So they've delayed the pour on the, but they're gonna pour this last floor Wednesday and Friday. And I think the solution, it sounds to me, because it does sound like we're gonna make anything now, is to wrap it up, close it down. I'll leave the building on the market with mark payment for lease. Uh, if we, you know, I think we can revisit this in, you know, in twenty-four to thirty-six months. By then, Related will know how that's actually going. If it's fully leased, of course, I'll be, I'll be able to resume. Uh, and if the hotels are doing well and Marriott's interested or Hilton is interested in doing a different brand, then the shelves there, we can get right back on track. It sounds like that's the best solution because I can't, you know, I don't, I don't want to keep building more floors that we're not zoned for and putting any more money into this. And I don't have any funding to go forward. So if there's, if the indication for me was, well, you know, we want to, and again, I'm hearing sort of the Commissioner, I mean, Nearing has sort of indicated, well, maybe there's something, you'd rather not see a skeleton of a building there for a number of years in the downtown, and I wouldn't either. But I also can't, I can't finance any further construction after this week. So he, he suggested maybe there's some way to come up with something else. But the only way I could evaluate the added benefit would be how much higher rent do you get for thirty-story building for the extra twenty stories per foot over and above what you would get if it was a lower building? And if that's, you know, whatever, fifteen, twenty-five cents a foot, then you would take that and use that number to determine, you know, in, in less, netting out the cost of the building. It's a much more expensive building. So I don't believe it actually, you make, you make less money. That's why nobody builds these towers for rental buildings, because you can't, you can't make, it, it doesn't pencil. So I don't think that as a developer, I can pay more money to build residences. But, you know, if there's something I do for the city, I'm happy to do it just to, in the spirit of compromise, just to keep it going and to keep the jobs there and, and avoid having the skeleton in the middle of downtown. But I'm open to it, but if we can't, then I'll probably, the best thing is to go to the expense of pulling it all down and then revisit it and we see how the market matures and this all shakes up. And I'm okay with that.
Okay. Um, I don't see any other parts, um, so, um, thank you, uh, Jeff Green, uh, thank you, Rick Green. And, uh, that terminates the discussion on this issue. Uh, I don't really have anything on Mayor's matter. Well, the one thing I would like to say on Mayor's matters is, I, I'm hearing that, uh, the county may be relaxing, uh, some of its restrictions. Unfortunately, we as a city didn't have a, a whole lot of time to weigh in and, 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 uh, uh, present our opinion on that. So we'll see what the county comes out with and we will, uh, see where we go, uh, what kind of impact it will have on, on our city and, and the city's functions, uh, and, and, uh, whether I need to, to, to revise, uh, the, the, my executive order. So keep an eye out. I, it, it's a little bit frustrating that, uh, it seems like, I guess, we as a capital city, the largest municipality in the city, in the county, uh, don't seem to get, uh, time to express much of our opinion as how we would like our city run. But we will deal with that for another day. Um, and, uh, the other thing is, uh, although I'd stated it in an email, I wanted to, uh, publicly commend, uh, Commissioner Peruzzi, Commissioner Nearing. And I know, uh, Commissioner Lambert was the alternate. Uh, we, we got a, a very great result on State Road Seven. Uh, and, um, well, well, nothing's guaranteed. What, what, what I do know, uh, is that it looks like, uh, they will have to start, they, meaning the proponents of State Road Seven, FDOT, would have to start, uh, from scratch with its permitting process. Federal permit was, was revoked. State permit, uh, has been revoked. And, and so, uh, that, I, I won't, I won't declare victory in a war. Uh, but we have achieved a significant victory in the battle, significantly. And so, thank you all, uh, for all of your hard work and carrying on, uh, that battle. And we'll see where things go, uh, from here. Uh, so, does anybody else have anything for the good, for the good of the body? Uh, if not, uh, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much and, uh, talk to you soon.